Welcome, everyone. This is a notice and call of a special meeting. Day Wednesday, March twenty second. Now call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
District one, Councilmember Casey.
Here.
District two, Councilmember Vera.
Here.
District four, Councilmember Martinez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Silveira.
Here.
Mayor Lopez.
Here. I don't see it here on the agenda, but I'm gonna go ahead and listen. Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start off with citizens communication. Excuse me. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in the city council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes. Resolution two thousand and seven one oh six, members of the public interested in addressing the city council during the special meeting may address the item which have been described in the notice of the special meeting in accordance with government code section five four nine five four. Anyone wishing to address the city council must adhere to the rules of decorum. The rules of decorum are posted outside the chamber doors. Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to?
There are no members on Zoom.
Hey, is there anybody in the public that would like to make a comment? It's body, please state your name.
Good afternoon, um. Mayor, Councilmembers, John Warren, City of Series. My comment, the audio that's here have been repaired or upgraded uh in the chambers. Uh, you either have or you have a big booming Mr. Jim down there. Uh, and it knocks you out of the room or somewhere in between. There should be some way that the audio level can be maintained at a reasonable uh tone. So the general public can hear it. And when you people ever speak, it's not even very, very loud, very, very, very soft. Well, that would be my comment as to something that's not on the agenda. It does need to be addressed. We spent a lot of money putting speakers and things in here, but volume level is is kind of a critical thing. When a person speaks normally, it wouldn't be real real loud, but it shouldn't be. So please try to do something about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's pretty much easy fix. Talk to the engineer about that. Maybe I should speak a little louder. It's easily can be fixed. All we have to do is ask the engineer to go ahead and and make sure that he's listening to the audio. No, yeah, we'll we'll make sure that we take care of that. Is there any other persons that would like to speak? Okay, public period is now closed and moving on. Moving on to our only item that we have today for our special meeting, the council rules and procedure workshop. And this will be led by our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. If you recall, um, the reason for the workshop um was at our January ninth meeting um at the mayor's request and referral and council authorization. We discussed scheduling this workshop to go over the rules and procedures uh the city has in place. The current version of your rules and procedures handbook has been in place since two thousand and eighteen. Um, and it's good to review the rules, guidelines, processes periodically to make sure that everything still comports with current practices. What's um on the books in terms of state law, making sure that it's consistent with your municipal code. More importantly, it gives the council an opportunity like this in this setting where we're really focused on one thing to go over your rules and procedures if there's any questions. So so my goal in this workshop is twofold. One, answer questions, clarify about what is currently in place. And second, then go through the handbook from the perspective of what does the council want to see changed? Are there points of clarification you'd like to make, things that you'd make adjustments to? And and we can go through the different chapters and the different sections, but practically speaking, I think it's important to focus on the things that we can change. There's several items, as you probably noticed in the staff report, that is delineated in terms of there's a state law associated with it. If there's a state law associated with particular rule guideline, uh etcetera, those aren't things that we can change. Those are set by statute and and as spelled out in the staff report. Series is a general law city, which means that the city is subject to the rules that are already in place under the government code and in other portions of of state law, elections, public contracting, things of that nature. But there are several things that the council does have discretion on making changes to. And we'll work through those, and those are the things that I like to focus on um and get feedback from the council. So what I'm looking for ultimately at the end of the workshop today is consensus on changes that you would like to see. What I will then do is compile all those changes in another version of your rules and procedures handbook in red line so that you will actually see literally all the changes that I have suggested or that I've made based off of your recommendation and and guidance. And I'll bring that back to you for approval and further discussion at a regular meeting in the future. So depending on how extensive the changes are, depending on maybe additional research we may need to do. Um, I anticipate that we can probably bring it back to you the second meeting in April, maybe, maybe May. Um, but again, that 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 will depend on on the outcome of today's workshop. But that's generally the framework that I that I envisioned for the workshop. But more importantly, I want to hear from the council, we'll open up to the public um to provide feedback on what do you think's working with the current rules, what's not working? And as always, staff's here to provide any any questions um or provide any answers to any of the questions that you have. Generally speaking, from a rules perspective, it's an administrative function. So it's really uh the duty and responsibility of your city manager, your city clerk for purposes of agenda and and those requirements under the Brown Act and your city attorney to work together to make sure that your rules and procedures are being followed and that they're up to date. And so again, that's the purpose for the workshop. And I think it makes the most sense to open it up first for council for any questions. And then we can go through the staff report and we can go chapter by chapter if that if that is what the council desires to do.
So you want us to ask questions? Or we start going through this or ask questions as we go along?
I think maybe if we have some general questions about how the rules work, what they're designed to accomplish, I we can answer those preliminary ones first. Or we can dive in and and just tackle each chapter.
I have no questions. I would rather just dive in chapter by chapter. I think some questions might arise from us going through. I don't know. Council feels about that unless they do have any questions.
My question is in the work document here, uh you're you're quoting government codes, municipal codes, and then like the elected mayor that oversees the responsibilities, and then there's the government code and municipal code. And then it says the council has discretion to amend as long as it does conflict with these codes. And uh I apologize, I didn't take the time to review these codes. When we're question, we we might make a suggestion that is a violation, but and then back and state that.
Yes, it's essentially. So I don't want you to worry about having to have read the codes or we're and we're not going to go through the codes today. What I'm looking for is policy. The policy changes that you want to see, and I'll give uh Councilmember Casey, I'll give you a really good example. Something that is not established by law or the municipal code that is typically included in a handbook like this are more um what I'll call a ceremonial matters. So for example, does the city have a proclamation policy? Actually, this might be a good question for our city manager or city clerk because I'm not sure if that's ever been formally adopted. But that might be an area that you may want to document in here because the purpose of the handbook is foremost for the council to know what as a new incoming council member or even a seasoned one, what is my role as a council member and as an elected official? And I'm looking at this be of practical use to you. It's not of any real practical use if if it's not clear, if there's ambiguities or if it's missing information. And additionally, also to provide that information to the public so that they also know what rules essentially you've created and you find yourselves to. Um, so that would be one example, but to answer your question, no, you you don't have to worry about having read the laws. And the feedback that I get today, if I'm unclear on whether we have the ability to make a certain change, I will research that and make sure that I bring that back with an answer at the at the next meeting.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay, I believe this TV screen was blocking numbers, Councilmember. At the question, go ahead, sir.
So I I'd have a question, Nubia. Uh, so for example, right here, there's enforcement of decorum and courtesy. Uh, there's no municipal code or rule outlining our enforcement of our rules of decorum in front of the meeting. That's something tonight that we would be able to set a a a rule forward and have it as like that's the council's authority. This is how we would handle the enforcement of our rules of decorum.
Yes, that's a possibility. So as an example, probably jumping a little bit ahead, um, there are each jurisdiction obviously will tackle its own case by case scenario, but there are jurisdictions where I've seen the codification of a decorum rule, basically rules of civility in the municipal code and establishes an entire framework of a rules committee. If there's ever complaints of, you know, incivility or a violation of some type of rule uh by an elected member, how do you? How do you deal with that? And so that that's a possibility. Um, so that yes, that's a that's another example. Alan, did you have?
I wanted to remind um council, please speak into your mic. And whenever you're turning your head like this, it doesn't catch up, catch through the speaker, so please speak directly into your mic.
Okay, with that being said, you ready to take a?
Yes, I think we're ready to tackle this. So if you turn to um the second page of the staff report, and I gave a little brief explanation of how I set this up, but really it's a it's a table that breaks down the entire handbook in its current form and gives you a general topic of of information, the authority, the legal authority for it, and then possible revisions. Again, any recommendations that I've included here in the staff report from a legal perspective are strictly that legal recommendations for changing the code. Um, if there's there's the difference between policy and the legal component, the policy is going to be council. Council's going to tell us what you want to see changed. And it's then staff's jobs to try to see if we can make that work and then bring that back to you. So chapter one is a very general overview of the powers and duties of the legislative body. And so the way that chapter one is broken down to is goes through basic each office, the big, the the office of council, mayor, the vice mayor, explaining what the role and the function is and and the election method by which it occurs. Um, that's always very helpful and I I in reviewing this section myself, there are places maybe that I can make recommendations to beef up the language and provide a little bit more examples um of duties and responsibilities, but it would be consistent with this chapter. In in general terms, chapter one is is pretty set um by statute. So there there really isn't a ton of changes that I think the council may want to make. But again, I'll leave that up to I'll leave that up to the council if you have any questions specifically about chapter one.
Is that our cue?
Yes.
Okay. So the legislative body portion of this, it it just was a brief overview. The uh the governing legislative body of the city of Series is a city council consisting of the mayor and the four council members. The mayor is elected by the qualified voters of the city at large, starting starting with the note two thousand, this says two thousand and seventeen. The two thousand, the four council members will be elected by districts pursuant and requirements of S P four one five. City council moved on even years elections starting on November two thousand and eighteen. In reference to all the members of the city council, inclusive of the mayor and the council members, is intended to use of the term city council is an appropriate substitute for the term mayor and council members. Is there any updates that we need to make since we went through this, through a process recently with redistricting? Is there anything that we need to update?
Not really. Uh, it maybe one possible changes. This reflects what happened in terms of the district election changes. It's done now, so maybe just maybe minor tweaks to just set that as that's the way that it is as opposed to be some of that background. But not really. I I don't necessarily see anything more than maybe just more explanation. I I do think that there may be uh portions of the handbook that could use a little bit more context. And again, each elected member comes into office with different levels of experience. And so we may have some council members in the future that um are very well versed in local government procedures, rules and framework. And there may be other elected officials who don't, who don't have that context. And so that's what I think the goal for this council is. If you put yourself in that spot, I'm a new council member, what would I have liked to have seen in a rules procedure handbook coming in? Or I've now been on the council for a while and I still am wanting to see changes or maybe confused about different things. That's maybe the that's the lens that you're looking at this for today. So I will be honest, I don't believe chapter one really needs a lot of touch other than maybe some clarification. I have put in the staff report uh at the end of each chapter, a recommended revision. So if the council is okay with it, my recommendation is to add a pretty robust section for ethics and conflicts of interests, very similar to the information that we went through when we did our onboarding training with each council member. That information would be in this handbook and would be almost like a guide for you um to have if you have any conflict questions when in, you know, in the event that something arises. So that would be my recommendation and the rest of it is very.
That would be a in addition that you're you're bending and and actually adding it to this.
Yes. Yes, that would be one one recommendation I have. The other ones are are I think maybe more technical in nature. I want to add a little bit more language to the introduction um to explain the purpose of the of the handbook, more references, but again, those are all technical things that that we can change. Um, and another one that comes up sometimes and it wouldn't hurt to include in as part of the handbook for reference is what happens if there's a vacancy on the council? So if there is a resignation or some other type of event in which um an elected official can no longer carry out that office, there's very specific rules in the government code about how you can fill the vacancy. And that might be helpful to have in the handbook.
That definitely would be helpful.
That's a that's a question that I
that's hundred percent should be in here. Very clear because we just did that three times and there was a little bit of a struggle on figuring out how we were supposed to do it correctly.
Right. And this this was an example of it is set by law. So I would literally be providing that and explaining in a way that makes sense because there's just to give you a brief overview, what you can do depends on what part of their term they resign. So if they resign in the first half of their term and we can actually still conduct um an election and there there's all those kind of rules. So I think it I I would think that it would be helpful to have that in the handbook. But again, that's a that's a recommendation and and a thought that I had. And like I said, the rest of it's more organizational changes. So if the council feels comfortable with those recommendations, I can I can include those as part of my red line for you to see the next meeting.
Where's the council feel? I don't know, uh, Councilmember Vera.
Is it possible to change the the vice mayor selection from December to January since the ballot, the certification of the election is not always done proper to?
Yes. So uh Councilmember Vera is referring to section F on page three or reference so that we can look at that. And so the vice mayor selection process, um, again, this is one of those areas where you can make some changes. Um, it is a purely appointed office, meaning that you don't run for the office of vice mayor, it's selected internally. And so the way that the rule is currently set up, it's a two year term and the selections made at the first meeting in December. Now, generally speaking, I think the intent was for it to align with the certification of the election results. But it's possible that that might change depending on on the it could be the second meeting. Sometimes I wouldn't anticipate that it would go as far as January, but that might be a change. So instead of it being at the first meeting, you could say it that it could be um along with the meeting where the certification occurs, it could be the second meeting, it could be the first meeting in January. And that again, that is actually an area the council can change.
It is written that can be put off a meeting.
This I I remember.
Already. If it's if we if the certification isn't possible, it's written in there already that it can be moved. If we want to just make it easy and say we're just gonna move it till first in January, we could do that too. But that provision is already written in there.
Is for like historical context, I'm for first election.
You can't hear you, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. That's that's me, Mr. Warren. That's me. Uh, just for historical uh reference, I remember when I we first were elected, we chose the vice mayor position that night. So can we at least have the option to do one or the other depending on because obviously when you select the vice mayor position the second time around during your four year term, that right there is is going to change, so. I just I just and then and I don't know where the section would where we could allow this, but for example, we had somebody who who dropped out during during their time as the elected official and we decided to appoint someone else. Is there anything in here that suggests that we can, there's a timeline for that or?
Right. And that's the vacancy uh portion that I discussed. I think it's important to have in the handbook uh the vacancy rules, the way how to fill vacancies.
How to fill. Oh, so during that portion of it, we would have to, we would adjust that is what you're suggesting.
In the in the handbook, yes. We can't change the rules because the rules are set by law, but it would be good to have those rules in your handbook.
Okay.
For easy reference.
For easy reference, okay.
So is there Councilmember Vera has identified potential changes to the vice mayor selection. Are there any thoughts on what you would like? If there is a desire to change it to anything different?
Thinking consensus sounds like it's the first meeting after the certification of the election and the first meeting in which all of the elected officials are officially and I'm gathering.
Yeah, because I I it kind of makes sense being that in December, we only have one meeting, right? And during that time is when people are sworn, those are sworn in. And then the very first meeting in January is what we actually most position of doing it that night. I mean, does it make a difference? Are we giving, are we giving the, are we just giving them, giving people more more an opportunity to have more time to think about what their selection doing it that that evening?
First meeting after the votes been certified seemed to make sense. It was certified in that meeting in December, it would be our next meeting, which would normally be January, the first of January. That makes sense to me.
I agree.
Which is really what it says in here anyway.
Councilmember, I've heard from everybody except Councilmember Casey is is that.
Repeat when you just said that.
So what's what's on the table for changing? So right now, the vice mayor selection under the current rules are that it it's the seat that's appointed at the first meeting in December unless it occurs in the, what is it, the the action of the election shall be delayed to the next meeting of the city council. If the certification happens, it might be a little bit convoluted. So what I think we can do to clean this up and what I'm hearing is the selection will occur at the next immediate meeting following election certification.
Yeah.
Yes, I agree.
Which would generally be the first meeting because even by statute, you have to certify election results within a certain timeframe and it normally doesn't go past the second meeting in December. But then, yes, practically speaking, it'll happen in January, which might be a good time. Give the council some time to think things over, the mayor, etcetera.
Makes sense.
So I I hear a consensus on making that change.
Yes.
Yes.
And still under the same one or on page four, uh, I don't want to make sure we don't get ahead of ourselves. The study sessions in regards to that.
We're on chapter one, so we'll go chapter by chapter.
Get ahead of myself, but I just was reading.
Any other thoughts, concerns, questions about chapter one?
Clarify the vacancy. Right now, we Mayor and the vice mayor experienced a lot of vacancy for the term, just hope it doesn't, you know, go on like that. But uh what we have now is it can be appointed or be election. Is it clear how do we fill the in our present?
The the rules for vacancies are established by law. That's one of my recommendations is that we include that explanation in the in the in this chapter. Yes, that's on the table.
As for this chapter?
Yes.
Chapter one.
Just another question on the vice mayor selection in the event, because I think this happened in the past. If the vice mayor does resign, can we have a vote or a replacement? That somewhere in this section or would that be somewhere else?
It would be here and there. I don't believe there's anything that speaks further to that. So that might be something else that the council may direct to include in.
We just did it that way when last year or whenever that was.
That's what I'm hoping.
Councilmember quit.
Kind of get it declared in writings that way. There's enough questions.
Yeah, clarity on that. And then does the council need to be full, like that vacancy filled before the vice mayor's appointment? Or vice mayor can be appointed while it's still an incomplete council?
I think you can, and and frankly, because the the vice mayor role is filling in for the the mayor. If you have an, if you have a vacancy or even two vacancies on the council, you still need someone to step in or step up in the event that the mayor is unavailable. So we can include that language too.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think and and there may be sometimes during the workshop as we're going through all these chapters, you may think of something that triggers something from a previous chapter, just let me know and we can, again, the idea here is, I know it's a special meeting setup, but it's a workshop and I want for you to be able to I address all the issues related to the handbook, even if we have to go out of order. So that's not a problem. Mayor, one, I guess one point of clarification is since it's technically, um, it's a workshop that's open to public comment. I don't know if you've thought about how you want to allow public comment for for this at all and whether you want to wait till the end or if you want to do it after each chapter.
If we do chapter by chapter, the question would be, should we, would we be allowing five minutes per person per chapter?
No, it really, it is.
Maybe I can actually ask three members who are actually here. Would you guys prefer to, whenever you want to make a comment, step up, make a comment, would you like to hold your comments until we're done? So you can kind of hear what we have to say.
And the time limit would still apply.
And the time limit would still apply.
Mr. Mayor, John of Series, there's three of us. And we probably don't have a lot of comment to make in regards to some of the changes you're considering. And we would probably agree with them. So as we go along, if one of us happens to have a question, maybe we just raise our hand and this just move along after a couple of seconds.
I'm okay with that.
And that won't take up a lot of time. I mean, it's not like we have fifty people in the room.
I agree. So I agree.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
There we go. Mr. Mayor, before we move on to the next chapter, Nubia is is I, is that a requirement by law? And where it says that a majority vote for the entire council membership will be required to support our opposition of a legislative proposal or ballot measure?
Steve, so I think I have that in mind.
That was gonna be my one of my next questions before I was talking about H as well, but you can, if you want to.
So technically, there isn't a law about it. The question though becomes just as any kind of action the council will take, you want a majority of your body to support or oppose something and not have it be uh less than the majority.
So I have a, I have a suggestion. So when we're referencing to the position of a ballot as a council, I think that this section, we just make sure that there's no gray areas that we clarify. Now, if there's an, if there's an opportunity where this does happen, you have a council member that supports a position on their own. The question would be, should they be, obviously they should be allowed to do to do so. But to make sure that if they do send a support letter, that even if it does have the city logo, but it doesn't show the other council members, obviously because you don't know what their position is. Could that be a a you don't know what their position is. Could that be a, a, it cannot be a separate item after this, because for consensus, just strictly on I, if we all just make sure that we, we set the tone, then if we all support it. I mean, there might be three that support and two that don't support.
Right.
That makes sense.
I, I hear what you're saying. So what you want is a, a statement that clarifies, you can still have your own individual opinion. And you can express that as an individual, separate and apart from you on the council.
Right.
But that the body speaks as a whole and the, and the majority vote is the majority vote and it's the decision by the body.
Right. That's kind of, I just want to make sure that there's no gray areas and that's clear.
Is that?
That's my suggestion.
Is that, is that helpful? You think that would, you'd find that helpful in the handbook?
So I was just, and maybe this is just me, but I would like to see that maybe done to a two thirds instead of a majority vote. I, I mean, God willing, we're always going to want to agree on everything, but there will be times when we don't. Everything else is a two thirds majority, so why ballot measures and legislative proposals? Does it have to be a majority?
Will not support that. If we don't all agree, I don't believe we can come out in public supporting a, a legislative matter like that, like a ballot me- measure. Because if I, if I say I don't support it and the four of you do, everybody in the community says they all support it, that comes from the council. I don't think we can do that. I think that's just.
Are we suggesting a three, like, just like we do on the council already?
I am, yes.
We vote, yeah.
I am, I'm, I'm suggesting a two thirds vote.
Or a ballot measure or a legislative measure? Boy, I don't want to be one of the two that says no. And then my opinion is put out in the, in the community as if I said yes.
So there's a couple of ways we can look at this, because when we're talking about legislative proposals, and maybe we need to clarify that, a legislative proposal in this context is one that is outside of your role. Meaning that it would be supporting, uh, an assembly bill, a senate bill, a congressional bill, something of that nature. Then, uh, council member Martinez's recommendation is that it should, it could be a higher threshold. So you're wanting, instead of, because this means you need three votes to support it. You want a four? No, it's a majority. It's a, it's a majority vote. Okay, because typically, so typically for any resolutions ordinance, we just need a majority vote of the council and above the entire council, right? So it would be three out of five. There are various few rules in the government code that require a higher threshold, but they exist. So tax, certain tax votes to put things on the ballot are required to be a higher vote. Declaration of emerg- certain emergency situations, um, ratification of certain actions like that require like a four fifths vote. There's very specific rules in the code. This, I'm reading this more of you supporting something that's happened legis- that's happening legislatively in a different body of government. Um, and then, and then ballot measures as well, that ballot, ballot measures, I think more, is more along the line of maybe at the state level, again, similar, similar concept, because there's specific rules about at the local level. So this is more forecasting outside of the city. It's forecasting at the state. You know, at congressional levels. Do you want a higher threshold? Do you want to speak with a, I guess, a, a more certain voice by raising the, the limit? That's a question for, again, that depends on, on how the council feels. I, I think that a majority vote for something like that is perfectly appropriate because you all already have a majority vote requirement for any other action that you take.
I apologize, I misread it. I thought it was a, a five of, I, I do like majority thirds, that's what I was asking, so I actually misread that and would like to take that off the table.
Okay, council member Vera.
I would support.
You can make that a rule and force people to put the button in order to go recognize.
Thank you for the floor. Um, I think I'm in line with the majority vote as well as what Javier said, where the council can come together and say, as we voted for support, just because there's a certain legislation, especially right now, it's very highly discussed. But as an individual, even if I Brett, like he had mentioned disagreed, I think I'm still would like to have my opinion, especially when it comes to discussions right now, like the canine dog that went through public safety yesterday, that was a highly controversial assembly bill that was passed. And so I still like my opinion, even if they differ that my fellow council members and being able to say, and not on city logo, of course.
Right.
And, and that I rose a Linda support assembly bill, one, two, three, four, whatever.
And I think that's helpful, because again, the, the idea is and your rule of thumb should be, any statement that I put out into the world that someone's listening to, are they going to interpret that as me, as an individual, so me as Ms. Vera, as a member of the series community? Woman of the year, congratulations again. Um, or as council member Vera. Right? So there's, there's that distinction. So the real, the bottom line rule should be, whatever you're projecting out to the world has to, you, you have to keep that in mind. And the idea is that you all speak as a whole, and once you've made a decision, you may disagree with it and you can make statements about disagreeing as an individual or, you know, as a council member, but the decision's been made collectively. So I think I, what I'm hearing is maybe more information about how that looks and works would be helpful in the handbook, so that you again, it's a, it's a reference guide.
So would it be appropriate to separate these two line items if council member wants to make their own, submit their own letter and support legislation?
I think we can just include it here, and, and, and again, is, is an explanation of what best practices, and that's why you, you'll hear a lot of that today is best practices is just that.
She mentioned logo. I think that it's, it should be appropriate to use the logo, but not to use the names of other council members if you support it. Because that's what I'm very conscious about that as well.
So the default generally is that you can't, you shouldn't use the city logo unless it's official city business. And the question then becomes if council, I'll use council member Vera as an example, since you, you raised it as, as a question here. If she were to send a letter of opposition on a, let's use that as an example, on, on the bill. Um, at the legislative level, she shouldn't be using the city logo because someone looking at that might say, oh, this is a series official position on this item, and it's not, it's hers individually. So that's, I think, I think an explanation of how that works is, would be helpful in this handbook.
Whether they opposed or supported.
How that, and how that was.
Using the logo.
Yes.
But they can use their positions. You can see I, council member from the city of Series.
In certain situations, yes, but again, you have to be very careful about that. And again, for campaigning and for election purposes, you have to keep that completely separate. So again, yeah, so I think this is, eh, this is informative to me because I think it'll be helpful to you, each of you to have an explanation of how that works in the handbook. That's what I'm hearing from this discussion.
I think that's important, that we make sure that we clarify so there's no gray areas.
Yes. Vice mayor, questions, comments?
Yeah, I, I stick with my position on that, so, which isn't popular in this room. I don't believe unless it's a five zero vote, we should have an opinion on a ballot measure, anything legislative as coming from the council. That's just my opinion. So the, the way it's written in here, I don't support.
Okay, but I, I'm clear on the changes that we're going to have to make. Any other thoughts about chapter one? Chapter two.
Wait, hold on, I'm, I'm debating whether I want to jump into this one. Just reading it one more time. Okay, I'm just going to, I'm just gonna, I'm working, go to the item number H. Okay, so, the city council shall deal with administrative services of the city only through the city manager, except for the purpose of inquiry, and the, and neither the city council or any member thereof shall give orders to subordinate ordinance of the city manager. No member of the city's council shall publicly criticize or censure and any staff member of the city and shall instead rela- relay any criticism of staff member privately through the city manager. Your opinion, is that well written?
I think, I think we can clean it up, but if you're asking, um.
Because we have dealt with that before in the past.
Because you have what?
We have dealt with some of these issues in the past, of council, council members that are no longer here, that did criticize publicly staff members. But I wanted to make sure that, that that this is written in the right way. So we, how, how do we address it is my question.
I'm, I am, well, twofold. I think your city manager may want to weigh in on this too, but my thought is as a best practice. The roles that you have are very public, because you're elected officials. City staff is a little different in the sense that they're employees of the city and have layers and levels of protection because they're employees and in a public context. So as a best practice and structurally in higher, in a hierarchy, in employment hierarchy, it's always better to address workplace issues with a supervisor. And in this context, that's your city manager and that's your point of contact. And the idea of it not being, um, open in, in aired in public is administratively a good thing, because that's something that needs to be dealt with with that employee's boss, and that's the city manager. But I don't know, Alex, have you had any other thoughts on?
For me, it's fairly simple. Criticize in private, praise in public.
So I think that there may be room for making this better, and I, I will work on making some, I will keep the feel of this. Um, but to the second point of the mayor, how to best address something like that goes back to a council member Martinez was talking about the rules. So if you, if you break, if you're a council member and you break your own rule here, what are the ramifications, right? And that goes to the whole decorum civility, um, framework that I can bring back suggested language for, because you may, you may want to be able to have that discussion and say, look, you, you're an elected official, you should know better, you didn't. We're going to give you a warning collectively, because realistically, the only way that you can ever, I don't want to use, but eh, eh, discipline an elected member is ultimately it's the voters. The voters are the ones that make the decision if somebody should hold office or not. But if you have rules, it's up to all of you as a body to hold each other accountable. The question then is, what are those rules? Right now, it's not maybe the clearest and, and maybe you, you want something a little bit more robust.
I like that idea. I'm okay with that. Need some nods and some. I think I'm done with this chapter.
Okay. Chapter two. Chapter two really covers the bulk of the, the meetings, um, in, in terms of what's what's the framework for meetings? And it goes through regular meetings, special meetings like the one we have today, study sessions. So that's really, that's really the crux of, of chapter two. If you notice in the agenda requirements and all of that, all of that, most of that is all set by, by, by law. The recommendation that I have for this chapter is really beefing up the Brown Act discussion and providing more context on what the Brown Act, how that works in, in meeting context for the rules. But it's not, it's, it's not anything that wouldn't be taken from law. So that's my recommendation for changes that, that I can make. Then it's really up to the council if you have anything else that you want to change in chapter two. The mayor, you, you mentioned you had questions about study sessions?
Well, maybe more of a, of a name change, instead of study sessions, more like referencing workshops. Study sessions kind of sound like we're, we're in a class and we're, does that make any sense? And, and it also opens up to the idea of the, the concept that the city manager has been bringing forward with these workshops.
Yeah, we're going to make this change.
Yeah, I see. Your name's not on here, I'm sorry. Council member Martinez, your number has been pushed.
And then it'd be, if we could get more clarification on the rules of decorum and the enforcement, and maybe even perhaps, I know the mayor had suggested it about putting something in the rules for city staff and elected officials entrance versus citizens coming in, entrance separation.
We can do that too. I, my recommendation on that would be on the decorum. There's a specific decorum chapter. We can include it there.
Number, another number has been pushed. Council member Casey.
I, I would like to suggest that we change the start time back to before two thousand eighteen, at seven P M. Primarily because our city is growing more as commuter. And, uh, today's an example, actually, most of our meetings are an example of like participation. And Jim Casey, the guy that lived twenty four twelve people, I would rather start at four thirty, but I think for the betterment of the community. And I, I recognize that a lot of the other council meetings later that would just suggest that benefit of people that
Okay.
I believe.
Go to public, the council member has it.
Uh, I think before we, before we
Up around.
We, we jump around on that. I believe that's set in the municipal code too. I'm, 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 I'm going to, I'm going to pull, I'm pulling up the municipal code too. So if the council wanted to make a change like that, we could. So the law doesn't require a set time on it, on any kind of meetings, so that's up to the council. If you want to make that change, my recommendation would be, we change it in the handbook, but we also change it. I think if, if it's codified in the municipal code, we're going to have to change it there too. But I will, I will look at that while the next.
Go ahead, council member Martinez.
And then, eh, you know, if I could just, kind of the other side of that coin, I, I do personally like the way the time is set now. I know all of us have jobs, city staff are working and then they come over, uh, you know, Zoom i- is, is a resource now that can be used so people can listen in. You know, going an hour later would, would push it back for a lot of people. If we have meetings that run late, you know, midnight is a possibility at that point. Uh, so I know if, if this comes to a discussion, I would like to keep it as is.
I would even make the suggestion if it be five P M. But I don't want to go down that road.
So yes, I, and so just to confirm, the municipal code sets, it sets the meeting as the second and fourth Mondays of each month at six P M. Because you can also change the dates too. I don't know that you want to open the back can of worms today, but I'm just saying, it is codified in the code. So if a change were to be made, it would be need, it would require a change in the municipal code and in your handbook.
And then I'll go to the public. Mr. Warren, you had a comment?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council members. The general public, for the largest part, doesn't pay a whole lot of attention what goes on here in these chambers. Uh, I think you can see that as even our regular meetings, okay? I'm sorry. I don't, two inches from the microphone.
That's better.
Can you hear me now? I don't, I don't believe that the general public really pays a lot of attention what goes on in these chambers. There are some people in the city who do, and, um, six P M, seven P M, um, what I would suggest is a trial. Maybe for the next six months, you can have a temporary, um, change in the, in the code. I don't know if that's possible, to try and see if you would have more participation if you had the meetings at seven P M. See how many people show up, how many people pay attention. And it's, it's highly possible. Um, you can tell from the number of people that have the automatic notifications of what's going on in the community. Um, I've signed up for the notification, so I know when the council is going to meet. Uh, I almost missed today's because I hadn't checked. And, um, and I was given the information and tomorrow's at, at nine A M in the morning. I would like to attend that, but I have a previous engagement. And so my thought would be the short notice. I know that the government code says twenty four hours for these type of meetings. Uh, because I actually looked up that particular section in the government code. And we missed, almost missed it by five minutes, because I think it came out at two fifty five, uh, yesterday. And the twenty four hours would have been, you know, three P M today. So maybe with these kind of things, it's not so much as a nine one one to have this meeting. Let the public know that it's going on. Give the public a month's notice, so they can make some plans. They can look at their schedule and maybe be here. I mean, driving from And maybe be here. I mean, driving from the Altamont Pass here, I don't care whether it's six or seven P M., you're probably not going to make this meeting anyway. So maybe give it a trial run at seven P M. For a while and see how many people attend. And if it doesn't seem to be the interest, go back to the city business as it is today at maybe even five P M. Because it wouldn't make that much difference. And but it makes a difference to you folks who give of your time to.
Thank you. Amen.
Uh, Dave Pratt, series. Excuse me. When it was seven o'clock, I. Sometimes I had two meetings the same day and I was able to rush from one that was at five thirty to the one was seven o'clock here. So now I have to make the choice on which ones I want to do. I feel it's not gonna make any difference. You still. Only time you get this place full is when you got something prior to the agenda that. People are interested in. As soon as that's over with, they all disappear.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments? Hands raised on Zoom, bring this back to the council. So we're gonna keep the time the same. I say yes, I mean. Yeah, I'd rather keep it the same.
I'm hearing a consensus to leave things. Alone for now.
Council member?
Um. Like Daniel had mentioned, Councilman Martinez. I also have a job, an eight five job and then summer changes a little bit because we work four ten, so the six o'clock. Or even seven would work, I don't know, four thirty. Um, but I also like the idea of maybe even altering it like our board of supervisors does. Once a month they have an early session. Try to accommodate those. Um, I like the idea of doing a track run, but I'm perfectly okay. With the consistency of me being able to make all the meetings. So I, I'm flexible. I prefer again, uh, it's up to the citizens on whatever they feel is gonna work for them because I prefer their input and. Making the adjustments necessary.
Thank you.
Oh, the other. The other, the second half of the, of chapter two. It relates more to the specifics about the agenda. Um, and I believe. One, one item and just, just a thought because it's come up. Or about questions and whether or not you, you want to consider it. Um, on page nine, you have the. City council referrals, determination of items for the agenda process. And the council will recall. This is establishing the method by which things actually make it on the agenda for a vote. We have a very specific process that's in place right now that requires a, a request be made. The city manager to put it under council referrals. It's placed under council referrals, then the entire council gets to weigh in on that agenda item and whether. The council collectively wants to direct staff to spend time, money, efforts on that particular issue. Um, and then we prepare it and bring it back for you. Case in point, this workshop, the workshop. Wasn't something that we developed at the staff level. It was at the request of the mayor. It made its way on the agenda as a referral item. Council all talked about it, gave us voted, gave us direction and here we are. So that's a practical example of how that rule works. This is not set by law. This is an area that the council has the discretion to change if you want. Um, and so I thought I'd, I'd identify that as maybe a possible item for discussion.
I've seen in the past that we've made referrals on the dais. Does this, does that seem as if we're, there's an extra step? Or, or is it gonna be, is, will it be easier just the way it describes here that you as a council member or the mayor? Make a referral to the city manager directly so that way we don't have an extra step. So that way we can actually get this item on the, on the agenda.
And yes, an item on the agenda for discussion and to proceed with it. So there is that extra layer. So I'll give you an example in other, in other jurisdictions, each jurisdiction handles this area differently. Other jurisdictions. The rule is that as a council member, you make your request to the city manager. For the item and then it leaves it pretty open in terms of when it can go back to the council. Um, and it, in certain handbooks I've seen, it, it limits it to no longer than three meetings after the request is made. Bring back the item in full for um. Direction and a vote. But that's a method that you can employ. Uh, this one's pretty specific. But to the mayor's point. There's nothing that says that you can't make the, the quest, the request to put it on referral at a council meeting. But you don't have to, you can do it at any time and, and that's just something staff wise, we'll make sure that we get it on the next agenda. And bring it back for your direction.
Uh, would it make any sense to, to make sure it's being requested in a timely manner? For example, if you're requesting it a day before the agenda is going to be posted, I don't think that's significant amount of time. Maybe we can make a suggestion that we. Make the recommendations following the very next day of that, the previous meeting. Those are the, that's during the time where I'm. To give them enough time to. Make sure that they receive that email and or in person request. Is that in there already or is, I'm just.
It's, it states is prior to the posting. The good thing about this is we just need to know what the, the ask is for us to include it. So it's not, we're not preparing anything other than the agenda language. So for example, I think when we prepared the agenda for the handbook item. Uh, the council referral. Line literally said. I think a discussion about the handbook. So as long as we have enough time to put that, a reasonable amount of time to. Revise the agenda, I think that's, that's, that's sufficient and I, I'll, I'll check with, with Fallon if you think that prior to the posting of the agenda is efficient. Notice for you to make that add.
Yeah, I think that would be sufficient so long as there's not any kind of staff report, but that's what I'm hearing. I'm hearing that it just be a description of what the referral is going to be.
So if the referral is the day of the posting, you're okay with that?
I believe city attorney said the day before.
Yeah.
That's why I'm trying, I want, I want these gray areas to be cleaned up because I. Not saying that no council member would do that. I think that would be, wouldn't be common sense, but what if you do have a situation without, you have to get it on here?
Well, what we don't want is. Five emails, five phone calls with a list each of three, three things you want and it's. Noon on Wednesday.
I mean, this, this is where I'll chime in. I, I, I think we want a little more time than. You know, the day we're trying to get the agenda out and that varies depending on. You know, the, the, the gyrations that are going into putting that agenda packet together. It, it, it's, it's a significant lift by the clerk's office to put out that agenda packet. Um, and, and so we'll, we'll need. We'll need enough time and in the day of, it kind of depends when we're getting that agenda packet out, so.
And if I may also say, um. You know, the agenda's posted generally on a Wednesday. There are, once in a great while, we can post it on a Tuesday. So just keep that in mind. If there's a council member referral that comes on a Tuesday. And it just so happens to be an agenda posting week where we get it posted on a Tuesday. Um, we would then need to amend the agenda. So.
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure I have a time, a, a recommendation at this point. I would say as soon as possible. Um, just so we can, we can work that into the agenda production process.
Now.
Well, we, what we could do though is add language that says. Um, if the agenda's been posted, it will make it on the next agenda, something to that effect.
Just want to make sure that, yeah. And I do have two buttons pushed and before I, now there's three buttons pushed. Uh, before I move on. Now can we make that? A general rule for example, for a request for either a presentation. Uh, a proclamation or some source to make sure that those are turned in in a timely manner or is that a different conversation to have?
Well. It might be a little bit broader. So it depends on what the ask is. If the ask is for a proclamation which um. Depending on what the proclamation is, may require less or more staff time, more prep time. My recommendation is to have a separate proclamation policy.
That's what I was kind of.
And, and, and we can, we can talk about that now. We can talk about it at another point, but my recommendation is to have a separate proclamation policy. Normally what happens is that, and I think we have it in here, is the proclamations are more of the purview of the mayor. It's a ceremonial issue.
Exactly.
So we can include that in the handbook. Um, uh, do you found, while we were talking about, do you know if we have?
Can before we continue on, I know that I have three buttons pushed and if they, if you guys, they want to speak to the previous conversation before we move on.
Okay.
So I'm gonna go with, I don't, nobody put any names here, number nine, that you council member.
I, I just wanted to clarify really quick for me. Um, so it says any council member may prior to the posting of the agenda. For a regular council meeting, bring a, any matter to the attention of the city council, which is not other, otherwise scheduled on the council agenda. Is that, and for clarification, is that not a Brown's violation if I'm bringing something to their attention that I want put on the agenda? Like, how many people do, do I have to bring it to, to get it put on the agenda?
Just the one.
Just the one council member.
Just the one council member may bring it to the, may bring a matter to the attention of the city council. And you're bringing that to the attention of the city council via the agenda.
Okay.
It's not like you're gonna call everybody.
Right, okay.
Your, your point of contact is the city manager.
So I, I think we need to rewrite that section to be a little more clear. I've never really, when I've read that, it seemed a little convoluted and not very clear, so I think we could probably clean that up. Uh, to indicate as the city attorney just, just mentioned that the point of contact would be the manager. Um, and not as, as council member Martinez is presuming the entire council. So I think we can clean that up. Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Next person. Number seven, is that you, Councilmember Silvera, here you go. Who's down? They go to short recess. One second. Number nine. We can also, we can also update this number system because this is also outdated. You are number seven. Thank you. Casey. Yeah, I think so. No more confusion. Thank, thank you very much. We're now back in session. Councilmember Silvera. Thank you for pushing your button. Go ahead.
Uh, my suggestion is just to put a hard date or time, forty eight hours before the posting of the agenda. We have to have it to the city manager or it's going to be tabled to the next agenda. Black and white.
We can come up with a black and white date.
Seems as if we. It's a subject that we could talk about for days. And I think we could solve it easy just by putting a date and time that it has to be turned in by.
Councilmember Vera?
Along the same lines as Severa, kind of thinking the same thing about having like a Monday noon kind of deadline or a specific date and time. That's gonna be, yeah, Monday, whatever's gonna be consistent, firm, fair and consistent. Um, so there, in the event something happens, no one has to worry about. You know, and unless it's an emergency, a certain emergence or city type situations such as, you know, something like a giant sinkhole. One of our main streets.
In a case like that, most likely your city manager will have that on the agenda anyways. So this is more of your individual thoughts of what you.
Yeah, so that's, and then once we get the proclamations and presentations, I have. Ideas there too, but I think if we have a firm set. Deadline, then I think there'll be no, and a process like, is it just emailing it? Do we, can we only do it at council or do we have? The ability to do it both ways? I don't think it kind of outlines that we have. We can say it here at the dais at the council meeting or we can email Alex and have, have it done both ways.
We'll add clarifying language. We'll work internally to figure out a good example of a date and time. And you'll see that in red line and you can make adjustments as you want.
Okay, council member Casey? Hey, Mr. Casey? That was an accidental push. Okay, no problem.
I would like to hear the people opinion that this most likely affects more than any of us. Fallon and Christina, what would you think would be the best idea for this? And feel free to be honest. And you're the one that's gonna have to redo everything, you guys, agendas. What's your opinion on how this, you know, when we should give it? Turn it in, how long it should be before the posting? Your opinion probably matters more than ours here that affects you and your work every day.
And we're, we're still on the um, council referral portion, correct? Um, I. I would, I think a, a forty eight hour is more than sufficient and I think that. I think that would be fair. Or, you know, two days, how, whatever, however it's laid out, but a couple of days before the agenda posting, I, I, I think is, is fair and. And Alex, please weigh in well because it goes through you first before it even gets to me.
I, I would say the Monday, the Monday, the Monday, Monday. Monday, five P M.
Like it.
Uh, yeah, including holidays, that's fine.
Rid of all the gray areas.
Just not at five.
Any comments from the public? And then.
That was, that was the one item, maybe the most open for discussion under chapter two. If we're, if we're ready, we can move on to chapter three. Oh, are we, are we, you want to have that discussion now?
Is that on this chapter?
It doesn't exist.
Yes, then this.
So let's talk, let's talk about it here.
This is for presentations and proclamations. So. But what is the language I talk about for proclamations? Ceremonial, right?
I believe there is a brief description of that under the mayor's duties.
But if it is ceremonial when it comes to proclamations, maybe. At least be. In senses where council members, you know, just reach out to me. This is not, there's not a lot of times where proclamation, there's a lot of proclamation requests. I think there's more requests for presentations than. Proclamations. And even so, there's proclamations that are brought forward by the staff. And um. Sometimes it's brought to my attention, sometimes they're not. So I don't want to. Kind of roll back the hands of time, you know, this has been a tradition. But at least it opened up the idea of if council members want. Proclamation request, maybe they can just. Reach out to me as a mayor being this ceremonial thing.
Here's a rec, here's a, here's an idea. Maybe not a recommendation, but here's how, an example of how other jurisdictions do it. Proclamations are um. Consider the purview for presentation purposes of the mayor. The request can be made to, can be made by. The mayor or a council member at a city council meeting during. You know, we can, we can put it under items from council because I know we have that on the agenda. That might be a way to, that might be an appropriate way to do it. You can also do it separately and administratively going through the city manager directly with the mayor. So that, that's a possibility. Other than that, then the mayor, you know, retains the right to modify, edit, otherwise amend any proposed proclamation. To meet city requirements, needs or policy determinations. Um, and there's, again, this is just an example that I had because we spoke about this and so. I, I pulled some language, so I can make some recommendations if you want something that. Robust or maybe just as simple as if you have a request for a proclamation. You can submit it to the mayor and the city manager because again. The, the mayor will be doing the public proclamation action, but staff still needs to do the legwork. Depending on, on what it is. So maybe that's the. Proclamation policy is that it goes to the city manager and the mayor and then it's.
I mean, I, I would like, you know, even for in the future that. You know, the mayor still honors some of the council members' requests for a proclamation, but also keep it the way it is now. I mean, I've been pretty. At least in my opinion, pretty fair about when. Questions from any council member. Kind of, you know, do my best to accommodate. But like you said, it is a ceremonial thing and I think that. Proclamations are, they are important, but I just want to make sure that. Proclamations are being requested and not outrageous.
There, there are. There, there are some cities that actually limit the type of proclamations that can be issued.
Think that we've been pretty good, and hope that never comes to that. But I don't know, that's a whole nother kind of worms to be opened, what is, what is appropriate and not appropriate for proclamation.
Correct. Again, we can make it as robust as you want, or something just clear and simple that says it goes to, to the mayor, it goes to the city manager. And with a little bit of, you know, a little explanation of how that works, and we can include that in there.
Now, does, does that also, for example, when staff have a proclamation, they should be letting me know, correct?
Yeah, so that it's a, it's a two-way street with city manager letting the mayor know. But that, again, that's more of an administrative issue, that doesn't have to be.
But we're just talking about us, right? I, I, I would want, I would wanna make sure that the council has an opportunity to reach out to me and submit a proclamation if they so choose. And, and that'd be great. No, I'm just, I'm just alliterating. But then, but that will be the, the language update that you can, okay.
If I could add, if I could add something, um, if we're going, not to get into the weeds, but if we're going to, uh, make this a section in the, the handbook, I would, I would like to, I would recommend there be some sort of timeframe, um, similar to the council referral. Uh, proclamations, believe it or not, do take quite a bit of time, depending on the subject. Um, it takes quite a bit of research. So, uh, you know, this isn't, the council member referral is typically just a sentence that we have to place on the agenda where as a proclamation, we're finding out facts about the, the subject matter. So if we could place some sort of minimal timeframe that staff has given to prepare, that would, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, I would, I would suggest, uh, making sure that it's at least, uh, two weeks before than the next city council meeting. But literally the next day after that council meeting, it should be submitted. And then you'll have enough time for the next council meeting, which would be in two weeks. What, what does that look?
Uh, I, I'd probably ask for a little more time. I mean, those, those things can be fairly research intensive.
Well, what, what if it, what if it's for that month?
I mean, that.
I was, I was thinking.
There's times where, let's just be honest here, we've.
Because two weeks.
Or we just.
If it's in the middle of the month and it pertains to the month you're in, then we're not hitting it until the following month.
Do we have a list of proclamations that we normally do a year?
We've put together a list of proclamations that we have done year to year. Um, some years we do them and some years we don't, so there's not any real consistency. Um, I don't know if we wanna get into that kind of detail.
That would actually help, because you'd have your, your basic proclamation that we have every year. So you wouldn't necessarily need to put in requests every single time. Because I mean, I've had a, we've had to remind each other of, oh, this is coming up, let's make sure we do a proclamation for this. But if we have the list, then at least you can reference your list and say, I don't even have to reach out to the mayor, he's already signed off on this, or they've already signed off on this. In the same context and language of what we're referring to. What do you think?
Administratively, I, I don't think we need that in the handbook.
Don't need it in the handbook.
We just have a list, and maybe we just have an annual list. So these are the list, this is a list of proclamations from twenty twenty-two, and that's something that the clerk can work with the mayor on, and, and then you, and circulated to the rest of the council.
But, but not have that list in the handbook.
That makes sense. We don't have to get into details. Councilmember Vera has a question or a comment?
I think you kind of touched on the time and coordination, as well as, I'm beginning on the request, maybe not necessarily bidding in the writing, but just in discussion, is when we put in the request to either the mayor or Alex, maybe putting in some background? Um, because we've done some individuals and recognize them for their contributions to the city. Um, not everyone may understand or know the knowledge there, and I'm thinking maybe if we submit that request, I think I did that when I submitted mine. I'm understanding why I wanted to have that proclamation. Um, I'm wondering, I don't know if that needs to be in there, if that's just a matter of.
It's a good, it's a good recommendation. We can add that. Okay. At a council member. It would be helpful for a council member to provide, um, as much, uh, background information. We can have that.
It will help. Councilmember Silvera.
Unrelated to anything we spoke about, but in chapter two, posting of the agenda is seventy-two hours, and nowhere in here unless I missed it. Does it talk about twenty-four hour posting for special meeting agendas? We just probably need to figure out where that goes and add it. I've looked throughout, and I might, I may have just missed it. Under number three, uh, two J four, it talks about seventy-two for a regular meeting. It, it doesn't talk about special meeting anywhere unless I missed it.
It says, whenever a special meeting shall be called, notice of such meeting shall be provided pursuant to state law. We can add that. It hasn't changed, as far as I know, ever in the Brown Act, seventy-two hours for regular, twenty-four for special.
I talked about it with somebody today, and so I just happened to look, and it's not in there anywhere.
That's a good recommendation for change.
Go ahead, Mr. Warren.
Yeah.
John Warren, I believe I spoke to that a little while ago. I did look up that government code section, and it's twenty-four hours, and that's why I made the comment. I think the notice for this meeting came out at two fifty-five P M yesterday, for the three P M meeting today, which was just within the time period. But I still think, rather than twenty-four hours, the general public needs as much notice as possible to gain maybe three or four more people showing up, hopefully. Thank you very much. Thank you.
That's all I have with chapter two.
Are we, are we good with chapter two? Chapter three. Um, and in the interest of time, because I think, I'm not quite sure, yes.
Sorry, backsies. Um, I, was there a desire, discuss presentation?
I thought we were, yeah, we were supposed.
Did we talk?
About which?
Presentations.
Oh, presentation.
Request by council members for presentation, sorry, sorry about that.
That could be
I.
Same as proclamation, except for how it's delivered is different.
I think it depends on what kind of presentations. I see presentation requests more along and more, more appropriate for council referrals. Because if you're asking for a presentation from either, uh, maybe it's an outside organization or another government entity, the, the county, STANCOG, you know, the homeless alliance update, or even a staff, a, a staff referral for a presentation, that is a little bit more substantive, that requires lead-up time. And the question then becomes, maybe, and, and Alex can kind of chime in on this, is, is that something that we have the resources to devote to that, or should we get direction from the council? I, I, I think it'll depend on the nature of the request, but I see value in having some rule in the handbook. So it's not really an answer, but it's, it's more of a question.
Kind of like your suggestion.
Please, no, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Kind of like your suggestion that. I do. Question should be. We do a, for a request to, to Alex, or should we just do either or?
You could do either or. My only thought on referrals on the dais is this. We're at a council meeting. We run through the agenda, and then we have a referral section, or, meaning not ones that have been put there. And it's just, oh, by the way, I'd like to add this to the referral section for the next meeting, so that we can talk about it then, to see if we're actually gonna do anything about it in the future.
Extra step.
It's an extra step. My recommendation is that it's something that's directed externally from a meeting, and just same process. Let the city manager know, we'll put it on the agenda, it's not something we gotta talk about at the meeting. It will, it's, it's a request, and it's up to the council to make a decision about that request, and we'll just put it on the agenda.
So, for example, it, it can't be in senses um, outside of the, outside of the, uh, the dais. It has to be, like, those are the rules, it has to be consensus brought back to us for presentation. Like, for example, Alex can't just, I ask around to see if everybody's okay. It might take too long.
Well, here, here's the thing, it's very possible that each of you have ideas that he's already working on, or something he already had in mind, right? So the, the council referrals is more of, this was at the special request of a council member. Maybe we didn't really have it projected as a high priority list item, but we need the council direction on what you wanna do. So for example, the, are this, this actual process. It was valuable and important, but it wasn't something that had been projected as a high priority item. But the mayor wanted to have that discussion, we put it on the agenda, and you all agreed, and that's why we're here. So it's really going to be case by case.
Okay.
Really gonna depend, but my, my recommendation is that presentations be, um, treated as a referral item as well in coordination with the city manager.
Okay.
Because it's very possible that you have a really great idea, and something that's already, from a policy standpoint, the city manager already had that envisioned as well.
Okay.
Alex, any thoughts on?
Well, I, I think, I think what, what we've seen recently is a variety of requests for presentations. Uh, nonprofit organizations, uh, which, which may have a connection to the city. Um, nonprofit organizations that are doing good work, uh, that may or may not have a connection to the city. So there's a range of requests for presentations that are coming forward from the council. Um, as long as there's an interest in hearing from nonprofits, we could certainly bring those forward. Uh, but we're, again, we're, we're seeing a range of requests from the council. Um, and I think, from my perspective, some, some, uh, general guidelines on what you wanna see uh, come to you, uh, might be helpful for me as I bring those forward.
Maybe that issue could be resolved when it's brought to the dais, and all the council members can talk about that referral for a presentation. Council says, yeah, I think that's something that. That, that makes sense, would that, would that kind of help you out a little bit there?
Um, yeah, I mean, that's, I think about it, um, after I just said what I said. Um, and I, I think, I think what we're doing has been working. Uh, the, the, the requests for presentations that have, that have come forward have, have had a connection uh, to, to what we do as an organization, or a connection to, to, I think, some good work that a nonprofit might be doing to the community. So, um, I think what we've been doing has been working. Um, as long as you're open to it as council members, you can funnel those requests through me. Um, I may take some time to review those requests, uh, to make sure uh, whatever is being presented to the council, trying to sift through it and see if there is a ask um, that is coming at the same time, because I, I think I, I wanna be aware of that as it comes to you. And I, and I wouldn't, I don't want you to be surprised as the council by an ask that you, we weren't aware of in that presentation. So some of those may, may take time for me to, to research, fully understand before they come to you. So, if, when you request it, um, I, I, I need to, would, would request that you give me some time to kind of vet it um, and have a better understanding of what that presentation might look like. So, um, I think what we're doing is working, um, so long story short, um, I think what we're doing is working. I don't know if we need to put that in the, in the policy, uh, but maybe some reference to working with the manager to request those presentations.
How, how about something to the fact that requests for presentations should be coordinated with the city manager who will determine the appropriate time to bring back to council? So we, again, it, it gives you a framework, so you know where you go, but it leaves open the, because again, it's gonna be a case by case basis. Does that work?
Works, works for the staff.
Anything further for chapter two? Chapter three relates to decorum. So, in short, not a very extensive chapter. My recommendation is, if the council feels strongly about having rules and procedures for how to govern each other, then I can come back with a ro, a robust process. We don't have to go into the details of it, I can bring it back, but generally speaking, what typically happens is as elected, as elected members, the only thing that you can do to, um, reprimand one another, or the council as a whole reprimanded council member, is there's three, there's three ways. Admonishment, reprimand, and censure. And there, and they all have their own separate definitions. Generally speaking, an admonishment is a warning. Um, we have rules and policies, we determine that you, you didn't follow that, and so we're giving you a warning, please undo it again. A reprimand is more of a form, it, it's a little bit more of that formal aspect of, you know, don't do it again, you did something wrong. And a censure is probably the, the, the highest degree that, of action that an elected body can take, and it's, 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 in a way, it's saying, is a formal action that, um, takes a stand on something that an elected official has done. And it is, that is probably the worst thing that you can do to each other as, as elected members of, of council. So, these are touchy subjects, in, in the sense that, you know, talking about reprimanding one another for things that, that have been done or not done, can lead to discord. And, and again, I don't, I don't know that we wanna focus on that, but there may be some value in having a framework on how to deal with those types of situations, if that's the council's wish. If not, we have, we, we don't have to include that. This chapter, by its own language, is enforcing, um, courtesy and being respectful of the public and of each other. Does the council feel that that's efficient? Do you want something more robust? What I have on, on the notes for this chapter is just clarification about, I guess, process, right? In chambers, uh, staff goes in one way, general public can go in another way, so we can add that. But is there any other specific thoughts about, think, changes you'd like to see in this chapter?
Councilmember Vera.
The area where we discuss pressing the button when we speak. Not talking over or interrupting other council members.
Again, I mean, it's, one approach is, it's the golden rule, right? You treat everybody the way you wanna be treated. Do we need to have an extensive rule of, rules associated with that? That's, that's up to the council.
Okay, so it actually spells it out right here. Interruptions, a council member once recognized shall not interrupt while speaking unless called to order. Unless a motion to raise a point of order is raised by another council member, unless the council member speaking chooses to yield to questions from other council members. There's, there's an opportunity here when a council member is speaking, and they finish speaking, they can yield. That gives an opportunity for the next council member to speak. That's, is that the.
Those are separate chapters, Mr. Mayor.
Well, that's when we're gonna talk about that, okay? Stick to chapter three. And then, if, so, for, you were gonna say something, I just wanna make a quick little comment. Does, does enforcement of decorum, A, look like it's well-written? Because, I mean, obviously, we've had dealings with, with the public before. And it spells it out really clearly here. I just wanna make sure there's nothing there that you've seen, another municipal government said, you think you might wanna add or change.
There, there is a new law that took effect this year that addresses specifically disruptive behavior at council meetings. And what it requires is providing the public with a warning of, look, you're being disruptive. If you do it again, we can, we can escort you out, so.
That would have to be a verbal warning, specifically those words.
I'll double-check the code, and, but we can include, and that's one of the recommendations that I have in the staff report, is to make sure that that law is
Okay.
memorializing here.
Because I wanna make sure, the reason it's important is because I could say it a certain way, they don't, but the public might not take it as a warning. But if we spell it out and specifically say what we have to say, and it's in here, then that will be taken as a warning.
Right. I'll make sure that the framework of that new law is included in, in this rule. I'll make sure that the framework of that new law is included in, in, in this rule.
Martinez, I, I did forget about.
It's all right. Uh so again, Nubia, like you said, you're going to include that new government code explaining that and putting in more detail. Uh explaining the entrances and exits uh separation. Other than that, I'm fine with how it is written. If anyone else had anything they wanted to.
Can you please say that one more time?
Also, she's going to uh put that new government code, is it right here? Uh five, four, nine, five, seven, dash, nine, five. That just took effect January first. She's going to add that verbiage uh to the enforcement of decorum, add the entrances for, for staff and uh council. And other than that, I was fine with how this section is laid out.
Given time, process, Nupia. Were you, were you going to say something or no? Or are you just reading?
Because.
Hold that thought, everyone.
We have a rules of civility section in the municipal code. My recommendation is that I combine the two and, and make sure that I referencing that in the handbook too. But whatever is applicable will be there. I, I just thought about that. So.
Okay.
There is also, as, as I mentioned before, um how do you enforce rules of decorum? It's codified in the rules of civility. So we already have that in, in the municipal code.
I just want to make sure that the, I know the, I might make sure I have the language.
Yeah, exactly. And because of that, I want to make sure that it's included in the handbook. So we have enforcement of a city officials misconduct. There's a rules committee and everything that I'd mentioned, admonishment, reprimand, and censure is already in the code. So I'll just make sure that it carries over to the handbook.
Okay, sounds good. And council member Vieira has a comment or question?
Okay, quick question on crowd control in area B. And it says it'll relocate if we get a large crowd. Is that possible under the new zoom laws and other remote access? Or do we need to modify that? Or allow like viewing remote in another location such as?
Is that, is that something you think we need to change?
Uh I, I missed that. I'm sorry, council member.
Crowd control.
D just kind of says you're going to kind of manage um in the event that there's a large crowd, which we've had a couple of times and thought this week on. Just kind of finding out, is that possible under the new zoom and accommodations for hybrid? Um or do we need to modify that to accommodate the current law that hybrid and remote access?
I, I don't.
I could have sworn I used to have the opportunity to expand seating in the next room if it was overcrowded. I thought that. I think we talked about it one time.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we anticipate a large crowd, we can certainly provide overflow viewing in, in one of the nearby conference rooms.
We can include that as well, just a, a simple explanation of that, yeah.
Just to, if I may go back to, to decorum, um if we do, it sounds like we may be modifying that section. Um we started posting those rules of decorum um at the entrance. Um I'd suggest and recommend we continue to do that based on any modifications we make.
Okay. Does that also include in that language when we have, see how we have the signs where it passes, is that included in the language? Can we include that?
You can.
Cause I would rather, I also wanted to, I know that signs are posted, which is.
That's what, that's what council member.
What you just said earlier.
Thank you.
So sorry, council member. I think I was reading.
Yes, I, I wrote that down as something to add to the chapter. Anything else for chapter three?
Jeanne Akeley series. This is a good section. I've had experience of this myself. I think someone in council knows that already. First of all, I'd like to know from, from the city attorney. It'll be a Goldstein. She's answering all these things for everybody. We're learning stuff every day that she's here on council meetings. Anyway, uh who is the, who would be the assigned sergeant arms? Would that be through the city man? Would that be the, the chief of police, someone else? Uh.
Alex, do you, there's specific?
I did. There's no specific assignment, but it's typically the chief of police. I mean, we do, we, we would customarily have the chief of police and or uh captain, captain Perry. Um if we do anticipate um a large crowd, we, we might also request um additional officers uh be in around the building.
Typically, the sergeant at arms is the high, I believe is the highest ranking law enforcement official present on behalf of the agency. So it would depend on who's.
Which would be chief or captain, right? Yes, that's your question.
I think too, in constructing this chapter three, there should be some addition there to the council members or anyone that's connected to the council members of, you know, parts of the different departments of the city should be uh trained some way of what decorum is and when the final note is to stop something. And I would like to know too, in this, these uh, this page on decorum, uh what is rude and derogatory remarks? Could you tell me? City attorney?
Oh, under item two, persons attending the meeting shall refrain from using the use of profanity and rude or derogatory remarks. That's one of those terms that has no definite definition because it could change from person to person. So it's generally the, the application is what is to, what's applicable to a reasonable person. And that's usually the standard that, that's applied here. So the new, the reason why I recommend changing this section to mirror what's in the law is that the law was recently changed to spell that out a little bit further. So I'm not sure if there's a definition about derogatory in the code, but I will endeavor to include as much of that as I can. Because sometimes that does leave it open for interpretation. The, the bottom line when it comes to decorum is that you want to encourage civility and respect. And what you want to discourage is, is derogatory comments, but there is a difference between discouraging that and prohibiting it and chilling speech because we have to remember that there is a first amendment component to all of this. So what we're really looking at and what the law allows the council to do is to uh take away the elements of disruption that is, that relate to physical violence or disrupting the meeting where it can't continue anymore. That's what we're, that's what we're looking at in the framework of, of the, of the law. So that's what the new statute uh speaks to and that's what we're going to include in.
And, and just for clarification, the, the chair ready the meeting can also determine that, correct?
And determine?
Also determine whether or not that is, that is actually, I could basically, if I were to have that incident happen and excuse me, verify, if I, if I were to see a disruption in the council that I have the privilege to make sure that I stop it. Is, I just want to make sure that.
You.
That is, that is pretty much the consensus, right?
The chair does have the ability to do that. Again, now, keeping in mind that in the heat of the moment, if something's happening and it's very dynamic, we may look at it differently than we would in hindsight. After the fact.
The fact, absolutely.
So there, there is, there still has to be an accounting for that, but fundamentally, we still have to ensure that we're protecting the freedom of speech and the right of each individual to make their comments. And that's why the number five is really important to keep in, in the chapter because you have to also spell out to the public that we're not prohibiting the right of the public to criticize policies, procedures, programs, or services of the city. Again, you're encouraging people to be, you can disagree, but just as long as you keep it civil.
Right, hundred percent. See, go ahead.
So when is it correct? For someone to stop something besides the mayor and the city council member sees something wrong, can they override the mayor and speak out? Especially when it comes to part two in uh chapter three of decorum. Well, it would fall under derogatory names and something defaming someone and their position in the community. Can the council members stop the, the mayor and tell him, no, he's not correct and we need to get the, the sergeant arms to uh stop this conversation or whatever's going on at the time?
So in the example you're giving, it's the presiding chair that's making the, the comments? Is that?
He's saying that if, if I'm not stopping it.
Yes.
And the council member intervene. And that would, that would imply that I would be ignoring the fact that it's happening.
Right.
I would, I would say that if, if that, if that was the situation, I would encourage the council members to, to say something.
Each, each council.
But, but I think that the, the chair at any position in any organization would, would see that and, and stop it. And that's why I was trying to be clear, I wanted the clarification on the verbiage because if I could say, stop disrespecting the council and that not, might not be taken as a warning. And that's why I was asking you earlier that it is important that the verbiage is clear so that the warning is clear. So I see, I see your point.
I, I, I think some of the city council members that are here now and probably in the past, you're not just fingering everybody here, but I, I don't think they know that they can speak out and say something like, I object, this is totally wrong. You should stop this right now. And that's what my point is. Can they override what he's said if he doesn't stop something that's not appropriate? Can one of the council members say, excuse me, you're wrong. You have to stop this right now, this activity.
Override, overriding would imply.
Yes.
Overriding would imply that I, that I said that I wasn't trying to stop it. Right?
Right.
So it's reality, what you're really asking is, is if a council member feels that I, that I haven't said anything just yet, do they have the right to say, Mr. Mayor, I think what he's comments are inappropriate. I think that's okay. Hundred percent, yes. And I, and I would hope, and I would hope that I would catch on to that fairly early.
I would have hoped, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would have really hoped.
Future, future mayors, uh any chairs and any, you know, you know, here, whether it's the, whether it's the city council and or, or other things that we're doing.
I don't think you need a rule for that.
No, I don't think we either.
I think it's important for the council to know that each of you have the ability to call a point of order, which is is, you know, I'm requesting a point of order to ask, is this appropriate? Should we continue to allow this person to continue this, this? And that's appropriate. But that's a procedural issue and less of a rule.
The point of order would make sure that we are not in violation of that person's right to.
Correct.
Whether, whether you like it or not, and that person has an opinion and they're, they are saying something, you can't call the point of order just because you don't like what they're saying. It has to fall in the lines of decorum.
So just, just as a point of clarification, I looked it up. This new law actually does define what disruption means.
Okay.
So I will make sure that it's included in the, in the handbook.
Did you say it doesn't describe?
It does. It does, it does define it.
It goes into more depth.
I, I think, I think we all learned something today. And we're still learning stuff, whether it's this chapter or another chapter. But I want every one of the council members to know that that guy in the middle, he has some things that he legally can do, but you have a right to, and I want you to exercise those anytime you see something wrong. Don't be afraid to object to something and put it correct and make it, make a, a rule that we can all live by. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions, thoughts about? Oh, okay, I'm looking.
Uh Dave Pratt series. I continue on that sergeant at arms thing. You know, we've been here a few meetings that got out of hand. The crowds just, and even when the mayor told them to tone it down, they didn't and, and some of them were told to go outside and there were still about enough that could be carried in here and then. So basically you, I've been, I've been the modest of council meetings that was even worse. And you need to realize that freedom of speech is correct, but not a whole gang of them overpowering everybody else when you're trying to have a meeting that's legible, that everybody understands. They need to, and so basically you need to come to the point that maybe you might have to stop the meeting until the roar just continues. So think about that, cause uh with, like I said, we've been here to the meetings that's really gotten out of hand because they didn't like what you said or we, or some of us said they didn't like. And when you got twenty or thirty people talking at the same time, it doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments? Okay, it looks like there's no more comments. Ready to move on?
Mayor, moving on to chapter.
We are coming upon two hours. I think that it's appropriate to take a five minute recess for those who need to use the restroom.
Here's, here's a question.
Yes.
Because we had this originally scheduled.
Two hours, yes.
Technically between three to five. Do we want to continue this to another workshop date or what is the council's pleasure?
I think honestly, looking at it now, yes. Because we, we spent the last two hours just going through four chapters? Two chapters, almost three?
Three.
And I, and I think that we're all moving in, in a positive direction and we want to do some great changes. And I know that it might be, you know, difficult to reschedule this, but I think that it's important to your point. That we continue this workshop at a later date. I don't want to be here for four hours. I know other people have other plans too. And I think this is very important too. Conversations are very, very important and we need to make sure that we take our time on this.
The, the good thing is that there are only five chapters. So we only have chapter four and chapter five to go through. They're, they're sizable, but.
How about this? We take a five minute recess. We come back, we spend no more than thirty minutes on the next, on the next two chapters and if it's any longer, then we'll have to, I would suggest we continue it. Is that okay with the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we stop at five and continue this.
Okay, there is a motion on the table in a second. Now we're going to have to take a roll call. You, uh, council member.
I'll second that.
Council member Casey?
Yes.
Council member Vieira?
No.
Council member Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Silveira?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, with that being said, my apologies. I know everybody took a lot of time on this, especially the draft so far. We're going to continue this meeting to another date, so we're going to go ahead, go ahead and ask for some future dates. Schedule this out in the future.
So if, if it's okay with the council, we'll do what we did the first time and we'll coordinate and take a poll on what works best. Agendize it as another special meeting and we'll, we'll reconvene.
We'll reconvene. Okay. Meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.